Started. And this is an informal meeting. Thank you so much, Delegate Lopez, for being here with us. And Ms. McCabe, thank you, too. I guess we'll get started if Senator Favola is listening, and she's going to be coming later. And I had, we thought we would do a little bit different from what we have in the past, but because most of, not too many people have been here before, it doesn't maybe matter too much, but have more of a conversation. So I think you've got the packet in front of you. Look at Lopez, I see you looking through it. And I thought we would kind of work through it. We are, I think, is Senator Eben joining us remotely? Who, in fact, Ms. Moroff, our liaison, would you sort of say who is where? Because I think there's some people here at the table, but some people are online. Why don't you fill us in?
Yes, happy to say so. So in person today, we have a little, some representation here. I'll let everyone introduce themselves, but we have a combination of some senators online, some senators coming up from Richmond right now. And so I will turn it over. Delegate Lopez, do you want to start? Then we'll just go around the table, and then we can flip it up to people who are on virtually.
Good afternoon, or evening, everybody. My name is Alfonso Lopez. I'm proud to represent the 3rd District, which is basically South Arlington and parts of Alexandria. And basically, if you think about the district, it's everything south of Route 50, but west of 395. And so everything from, you know, Penrose and Columbia Pike Corridor down to Sherrington, Abington, and Fairlington. And so I've been honored to represent what was then the 49th District, now the 3rd District, for, goodness, 13 years, going on my 14th year. And I'm the Chair of the Virginia, basically the Environment Committee, but it's called Agriculture, Chesapeake and Natural Resources. I'm also the Chair of the Labor and Workforce Subcommittee of the Commerce Committee, and I'm also on Public Safety. And I've been proud to have sort of grown in seniority rather quickly, considering how sort of dramatic the changes have been in the General Assembly over the last 15 years. You've seen, you know, once in a generation, elections happen fairly repeatedly out of it's not normal, and so you've seen a lot of people move up rather quickly. Delegate Hope, who's not here, is also the Chair of the Courts of Justice Committee, and has been a really strong member of the House for Arlington for, I think, 15 years, going on a 16th year. And I'm sorry he can't be here, but I know that Senator Favola will be here. Delegate McClure is represented ably by her amazing Chief of Staff, Madison McCabe, and I believe Senator Eben is online.
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, great.
Yeah, in fact, we'll let you introduce yourself in just a minute, Senator.
I will say, though, after having read what was sent to me earlier today, what you have put together is very, very strong, is greatly appreciated. And what I've been excited about is how effectively we've been able to work with this board over the years to accomplish a lot of what's in your package, everything from affordable housing to protecting the basic rights of the LGBTQ+ community, immigrant rights. And so I look forward to doing that for another session.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. I think I'll go to Senator Eben. Senator Eben, would you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, happy to be here.
There are millions watching here. You don't, you don't see them, but there are lots of people here.
Yeah, happy to be here. Adam Eben from the Virginia Senate, representing in South Arlington, Crystal City, Pentagon City, and part of Arlington Ridge.
Excellent, thank you. And then I think we have two aides online. Ms. Hetrick, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. I'm Lilly. I'm a legislative aide for Senator Favola.
Great, hi, Ms. Hazard.
Hi, Holly Hazard. I'm Senator Favola's Chief of Staff. She apologizes she's not quite here, but she's slowly making her way up I-95, so I think you can all have empathy for her at this moment. And she will be here as soon as she, in person, I believe, as soon as she can.
Yep, that's great. I spent a little time on Route 50, which is a little backed up trying to get here, too, so totally empathize. Thank you. And then--
Libby, I think Delegate McClure may have just joined virtually.
Excuse me?
Delegate McClure just joined virtually.
Oh, she did. I'm sorry, I don't see Delegate McClure. There you are. Delegate McClure, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, Delegate Del McClure, representing Arlington's 2nd House District. And apologies for being late, I just had a baby, so I had to feed her, she was kind of melting down.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, congratulations, that's great. And Mr. Jones, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, yes, my name is Benjamin Jones. I just started on with Senator Eben as his new Chief of Staff. Looking forward to working with you all.
Excellent, thank you. And then Ms. Porfiri, your icon is up there, so you're going to have to introduce yourself.
I'm Chief of Staff in the County Manager's Office, and I'm just watching for fun.
Oh, good, yes. We all at this table probably have an odd idea of fun. Excellent. Have I got everybody online? Did I miss anybody? David Woods is managing things, I think. David, why don't you go ahead, just for fun, introduce yourself? I think he's there. David makes the technology work, but maybe not all the time. All right, we'll pass over that. That's fine, thank you. Ms. McCabe, want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Madison McCabe, and I'm Delegate McClure's Chief of Staff, and I'm here for her in person, since she's at home with the baby.
Excellent, excellent. And then I'm here with my board colleagues, so they all introduce us, I think. Maureen Coffey, Takis Karantounas, my Vice Chair, Libby Garvey on the Chair, Matt DiFranti, and Susan Cunningham, board members, thank you. And we're joined by our County Manager, Mark Schwartz, and then also, as I had mentioned earlier, our Legislative Liaison, Alana Moroff, thank you. And I think also Elizabeth Parker, who has been representing Arlington in the past, is here as well. Hi there. Hi there, good to see you. All right. So as I said, this, we're going to have this sort of, you know, a conversation, and thank you for the kind words about our package, Delegate Lopez. I'm just going to, I thought Takis and I will just kind of work our way through it a little bit, and we can just have a discussion as we go, if that works for people. And then perhaps when Senator Favola gets here, she may want to sort of go back and go over some things. If she does, that's, that's just fine. And we're going to go through it, and then kind of quickly turn it over, of course, to the delegation to hear about your priorities and what you see coming up. It's going to be a very interesting year politically next year, and we'll sort of have a discussion. mutually support each other. So that's the plan for the evening. And I will start, I think you all, everybody's got the package in front of them, and we've got sort of broad principles. One of my favorite ones, which I asked to have put up first, is fully fund commitments to local government. There is Billy Keiger, I think, from Rockingham County, always used to say, there is never a, you know, a surplus in the state funds if they're not covering what they owe the localities, and generally what they owe the localities is not fully covered. And I really love that. So I just think it's just such a, such a clear principle, and it kind of, I think, is violated by the state all the time. So we really think the state should be funding, fully funding its commitment to local government, which is doing a lot of work. The J-Larck Education Study, I know we don't do education exactly, that's our school board, but we fully support the recommendations about sort of updating the standards of quality, eliminating the support cap, and getting additional staffing positions for K-12, because we here bear the burden of the state not stepping up and doing what needs to be done. There's one on work-first resiliency, and asking to just sort of streamline these processes to sort of kind of get away, any barriers we can, to having a good pipeline for workers. And also, we need to pay workers fair wages to incentivize filling high demand, and I would say high need, positions which really often do not pay what they should. And finally, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for comments, and see if you all have any, the emerging field of artificial intelligence, AI. Obviously, you know, this is my last time doing this, I've been doing this for a while. AI was sort of dimly on the horizon when I started, a mere 12 years ago, but now it's really, you know, fully with us. And so we are, you know, looking to find ways to have support on how to use and leverage AI capabilities that will improve what we do here with local government. Colleagues, anyone, anything anyone would like to talk about on the principles I just went through? See if there's any comments anyone would like to make, and then see if, Mr. Karantounas, go ahead.
So it is a little bit surprising that we, I mean surprising, it's novel, that we added to these three principles, because we had them last year, the fourth, that's the artificial dungeons. I understand that, and it's more of, feel free to correct my framing, is that we see that coming, we see, we see a lot of offerings, and it's a lot of temptation, local government to use AI capabilities. Remember, one of our biggest problems during pandemic, after pandemic, was under staffing, right? So we tried to make up with tools that begin to be offered, that, but they are vastly, I wouldn't, unregulated right now. So the question is, for us, implementing a technology, we're not like a normal business, we are, we're a government, so we have responsibilities towards, you know, the legal frame of operation towards our constituents. So therefore, we are, we are, we see that and emerging need to see regulation and thinking going on, on the, on the application of artificial intelligence in governance. And that begins to be pressing. This is how I understand the inclusion of this principle here, because this is all encompassing, it really touches a lot of types of governance.
It's one of those issues that every single local government, we don't have the resources to do. It's something that the state really couldn't support us on, I think.
If we do that, we don't know if we're doing the right thing enough.
Well, that's the, that's the point of resources, yeah.
And I think Senator Eben can even speak to it. He was chairing the committee that was overseeing the bill that has gone through this summer and worked on it. At one point, local governments were in there, at this point, they were pulled out, there's still, you know, the Board of Zoning might still be in there, et cetera. So I think they're still working on the final language of what that bill's going to look like. But I do think that you're going to see AI as a hot topic in the General Assembly this year. And it's Senator Eben, if you want to say anything on that.
Sure, thank you. We have, at the Joint Commission on Technology and Science, two bills on artificial, or three bills on artificial intelligence that we endorse today. One of them dealing with government use of artificial intelligence limits, regulates the use at the state level without putting restrictions on local governments yet, but forms a work group to see that we do it right with local governments. And then we have another one for developers and deployers of artificial intelligence, trying to ensure that people don't suffer from high-risk decisions that are made with any kind of algorithmic discrimination. But for now, we're going to try and start with the state level and a local work group.
Thank you, Senator Eben. It's good to have you there, working on all this. Any other comments on particularly any of this? Yes, Cunningham.
I just want to highlight, I know we've had lots of conversations throughout the year, and at our VACO conferences was top of the list as well, but the J-Larck Education Study and sort of the systemic underfunding of our local education K-12 networks. I think it's exciting to hear there may be some budget room this year, but I just want to lift that up for our community. Education is very, very important, especially for all of the issues that you raised about workforce, about our immigrant community, and we need to make sure that the mandates are funded, which they haven't been. So just want to highlight that, that is becoming increasingly difficult for us to balance on our own. We need, we need the state to be there with us as partners.
Thank you. Yes, local match, yes, not local mess. All right, I think, are we ready to move on to, so our first section, education and youth, which I think you have in front of you? All right, number one, J-Larck Education Study, we have, we've gone over that one. Two, teacher raises, which kind of fits, obviously, with trying to do it. And thank you for bringing up local matches, Delegate Lopez, because that's often an issue. We say, well, we're going to raise teacher salary, and then suddenly we have to be putting in more money. We're already putting in quite a bit here to get the salaries up to a point where we can hire, hire teachers. Youth mental health is always important, and childcare, I think, is people, I think, Ms. Coffey reminded me, are we the most expensive place for childcare in the entire country? Something like that?
In the entire country.
Yeah.
Isn't that fun?
Would you like to speak to this issue?
I would love to. We, we actually just got a really strong, quality-wise, bad, content-wise presentation from our staff on childcare, that the average price of having two kids in childcare in Arlington County is more than $45,000 a year.
$45,000?
For, if you have, for two kids. $30,000 for an infant, $15,000 for a three or four-year-old. And so if you have two infants, just imagine--
Twins.
Twins, yes. I know, I know Delegate McClure is listening, and I, I can't imagine the numbers that you're seeing, but I think you're living it just as much as anyone else right now. Virginia has made a number of investments that are excellent and that we're really excited about, but at the same time, our childcare subsidy list here in Arlington has more than 400 children on it, which is more slots, more than the number of subsidy slots that we have altogether. And so we need additional investment in slots, but we also need, as we implement the Virginia Quality Birth to Five standards that were part of the most recent investments in childcare, we need more money to help people meet those quality standards. Previously, each teacher got a $3,000 stipend essentially if they were participating in VQB5. That has gone away or been significantly cut. However, if anyone, any site that is accepting public money for childcare, which means mostly the subsidy, but also mixed delivery or VPI, if you have one classroom with one child accepting subsidy, the entire site has to participate in VQB5 and receives no additional funding to meet those quality standards or classroom observations. And so we are in a place where we want to meet all of these standards, but we need a little help making sure that childcare providers, who are some of the lowest-paid positions in all, all types of work, they're in the bottom 10 of all professions in the entire country for income, get a little bit of help to implement curriculum, have reporting standards, meet the things that we want them to do for health and development and safety reasons for our children. But they do cost money to implement. And so we are also supporting more resources for local government in order to conduct the classroom observations, develop the coordinated enrollment system, which is required of us under VQB5, and continuing to adjust local childcare subsidies to account for the actual cost of care in different local, local regions, as Arlington, like Ms. Garvey mentioned, is the most expensive one. If our subsidy rate is the same as Madison County, then we're losing out.
How many, how many slots do you currently have in Arlington? Do you have a backlog of 400?
I can know that. Was it 235? I think it's, it's 200-something.
But I believe it's more than 60% of the total state capacities in Northern Virginia. So this is here--
Say that a little louder, please.
I believe that's more than 60% of the total state count of these is in Northern Virginia. So that's, that's really impacting a lot here.
Yeah.
And, and Ms. Coffey will know that, I think this 3,000, it was, it was halved, it is like 1,500 right now. And of course, it doesn't incentivize anybody to, to continue to work. And since we are talking about teacher salaries just above that, they're pushed from the next, you know, school system. So that's really substantial, structural for, for the ability to, to, to be able to provide this.
And I think, Ms. Coffey, I know there was a, there was information that used, we set out for early childhood, that every dollar you put into early childhood saves $7?
Yeah, it's about a 1 to 7.
And have we done it for this, for childcare? Because it's totally--
So childcare and early childhood--
They're all the same.
Are the same.
Okay.
It's all care, and it's all education, because especially in those first five years, children's brains are making millions of connections every minute, and it doesn't matter if you are singing with them as little, you know, 18 months old, or doing the alphabet when they're four, it's all learning to them, because it's all new, and they're absorbing everything. And that's why it really matters that we treat it as a, you know, a cradle-to-career education system, right? That it's, it's from the beginning until you're in your career, you're always learning. And these are some of the most significant years, where there are different studies that have different numbers, but typically, the return on investment is for every dollar spent on an early childhood program, it averages about $7 returned to the taxpayer.
Can someone tell me how much the VBQ, VQB5 program gets from the state right now?
VQB5 is the quality standard requirements, and it goes through the Ready Regions, which means we are part of a region that includes Fairfax County, Alexandria, Falls Church City, and Fairfax City. We do not receive the dollars for that. Fairfax County is the coordinating body for our Ready Region, so the budget goes to them, so I don't know that number.
But we don't get--
Direct funding.
Yeah, or sometimes any, it's a problem.
And it is not an established, the key, or the formula under which these, these funds are distributed, are right now more based on who demands them, or not based on who needs them.
Well, they were, they were locked in, so a lot of this, a lot of this spending was based on how the American Rescue Act funds were spent. And basically, the investments that were made last year were just to continue doing what was already being done, which means that if we didn't already have mixed-delivery, fixed-contract slots in Arlington, we can't add more, even though we have some of the highest demand.
Right.
And so I think our entire region for mixed-delivery gets something like 1.2 million versus Charlottesville alone is getting something much greater than that number.
So, I mean, we're lucky to have a couple folks on the, in our caucus, who are on our delegation from Arlington, who are on finance appropriations. And so, I mean, I guess the, the most direct question is, when you say increase public investment, what are you talking about?
How many dollars?
How many dollars are you talking about?
And also the formula, I believe, right? To make sure there's a formula for distribution that makes it fairer?
Yeah, so I think, I think the, as many dollars as you can give are going to be used. I don't know, I think I would defer to the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation on what their ask is for additional funding, but I think making the formula for the division of funds based off of child population, child eligible population, because not everyone is eligible for subsidized childcare, would help to realign the funding with where it needs to go.
So we'll get you information, I think, better information, on how the formula affects us and needs to be changed, because that's fairly technical, I know.
I'm more than happy to defer to whoever's putting this budgetary language in, or to make the request, but I'd love to talk to the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation and just get a sense of what they want, and then figure out how that, we can actually make it work so it makes Arlington happier.
Great, thank you. Well, and actually, yes, and much better for our children here. Yes, yes, Ms. McCabe.
Yeah, so while we're on this, so Delegate McClure and I are working with the VECF on a bill that we worked on last year as well, and that would create a public-private partnership that would provide matching funds to businesses that cover the cost of their employer's childcare. And right now, we're looking at doing it as a pilot program. I don't know where that pilot would be, if that's something that Arlington--
We'll take it.
--is interested in. But I'd be happy to include you all in the conversations that we're having on that, and hopefully, we can get it through this year.
Ms. McCabe, was that capped?
Well, the reason it didn't get through last year is just because it kind of fell out in the Senate.
When you had the language, did you have a cap on how much money was going to be set aside for the program?
I don't believe there was a cap. I'd have to look into it. I think it was mixed-delivery funding.
Okay.
But, but yeah, we're working with the VECF on that, so they can, they can give you more answers on, on the funding source.
And so, just, you know, childcare is huge for us. When you look at people having trouble affording to live here, they've got three major causes, transportation, housing, and childcare. And sometimes we're sort of hemorrhaging young families, because they can't afford to live here. And we've got, that's just not healthy for anybody. So really, this is very important, and I think it's worthwhile taking all the time we are, thanking on that today.
Absolutely.
You know, like in the past, we've tried to do things where we, you know, enable localities to say that they may allow apartment buildings to put more childcare facilities in there, in the apartments, and any different, any number of ways to actually, you know, make this an easier process for folks.
I would say we've done a good job in Arlington over the last five years on increasing the number of slots, but when it comes to affordability, there's no replacement for public investment. We would never expect K-12 education to work without public funding. No other country in the world has made early childhood work without public funding, and we are excruciatingly behind our developed nation peers when it comes to how we treat the 0 to 5 age range.
Positively third world we are. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Karantounas, I'll go to Mr. DiFranti.
Oh, nothing. I was just adding that despite the fact that we increased significantly the individual, privately delivered one, this didn't break the price at all. I mean, actually, it's, it's still more expensive than college, so it's--
Yeah, yeah, it's crazy expensive. Mr. DiFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I really appreciate the questions from you, Alfonso, Delegate Lopez, because I think about how often we get asked to do more in areas, and the question then becomes how much specifically more. So, and I'm grateful for the bill, and I don't have the expertise that Ms. Coffey has in terms of her professional career is focused on this, but I would say I'd love to, I appreciate your suggestion that we follow up with a specific dollar amount and a way of asking, because literally, there's a ton of great pieces in this, and maybe it's because I have an 11-month-old, but I really would like to, this is one where I feel like there's a chance to make a difference, and this is super high priority for, for me in addition to others. So if we can get a Taylor to ask, such as that's possible, I'll be happy to be part of that effort.
No, that's great. And again, I think also checking the formula, making sure the money gets--
I think the formula is more the piece that needs to be, I mean, more funding is always great, but because of the way the formula is--
So there is some funding there, we just can't get it.
Right, exactly, exactly. So you could increase by hundreds of millions of dollars, and we still may not be able to access it. So I think the formula is really the key piece.
That's great, that's great. Welcome, Senator Favola. You made it. Yeah, traffic was a little hard tonight, I think. We just finished the first part of our pack on, on looking at education and youth. I don't think anything will surprise you too much. The next section is human services. I was actually going to delay until you get here, which Mr. DiFranti suggested we should do, but if you are, you've got a glass of water there and can catch your breath, if you want, we'll just go right there, if that's okay with you. All right, all right. Are we, are we all set to move to the next section, I think? And if I ever move forward and people online, you know, got hands up or something, just like interrupt and say something, because I might miss not watching the screen. So if you need to say something, just holler at. All right, next section is human services, and there are a number of issues there. We've actually got, I think we now have two mobile crisis response units. I apologize, I'm not sure, they're great, and, you know, more support from these mobile defense units are great. And of course, the, we're working on better available hospital beds for people in mental health crisis, and I think that's all familiar to you. And I will go on, I'll skip, because there's a lot here. I think I want to highlight, which is no news to probably anybody here, staffing standards. We've got to have good standards and provide, you know, living wages paid sick time, overtime pay for workers who are working with, with patients and with, particularly with elder care. Then we've got food security, which is, which can be an issue, and I think we're all aware how dismally low this, the SNAP benefits are for older, older adults, $23 a month. And it got temporarily increased during the pandemic, and things got a lot better, and then it went right back to the $23 a month, which is just ridiculously low to feed anyone. Even my 97, 96-year-old, 97-pound mother needs more than that to eat. Kinship care, and this is something that actually I was not as aware of, and I'll be interested in the discussion of this, on getting reciprocity in a border agreements between neighboring jurisdictions, so that children can be placed with family members instead of having to go to foster care systems, just because of where they're located. That, that's a real issue.
I had a meeting with Anita Friedman and--
Excellent.
DHS staff, and I brought the Commissioner--
Good.
--of Social Services with us. So, yeah, we had a long conversation about this, and I have agreed to put a budget amendment in, but the administration, at least at this point, is agreeing to support it.
That's excellent. Is it, is it a budget question, or is it actually just regulations?
No, it's a budget question, because they don't really know what kind of regulations to issue. There, it's a bit complicated, because you're looking at neighboring state, and Virginia has a certain set of regulations in terms of criteria for checking kinship care, what we expect in a kinship care model. I actually wrote the bill in the kinship care model. Maryland may have an entirely different set of expectations. So who still has responsibility for the child? If the biological parents are housed in Virginia, but we're putting them with a kinship family in Maryland--
With a grandmother, maybe, in Maryland or something, right?
Right, so it's a bit complicated. You'd have to enter an MOU, what minimum standards would Virginia want in that MOU? So that's sort of has to be worked out. So I will put in language directing the department to meet with stakeholders and come up with a framework for an MOU. So you-- So you, Arlington, and maybe, maybe Fairfax or other states could take that M O U model. And I also have, we also have jurisdictions in the southwestern part of the state, that near North Carolina and Tennessee and West Virginia, and they may be interested in following through. But you need a framework, and the state has to ensure that certain criteria are in that memorandum of understanding.
Right, great, thank you. Never simple, but so important for, so important for the children to be.
It is, it is. And you know that it's much less traumatic for a child to go with a relative or somebody the child knows.
Excuse me? Did I hear somebody? Mr. Evans, did I hear you?
No.
All right. One other issue, I brought up the food security one. I did want to know, where are we on the, on increasing the SNAP benefits for older people?
This is also a priority of N V A N.
Your microphone's off again, thank you.
Okay, this is also a priority of N V A N, and I think their request is that state dollars be used to make up the supplemental between the $25 a month and the $50. This is part of our whole safety net evaluation. We're going to try very hard to address some of these programs. We'll have a bit of a struggle this year, even though we have significant revenue growth. We have about a $700 million gap in Medicaid, and that would be keeping our current eligibility program. But so many individuals who were picked up under the emergency order during COVID, you know, they were picked up under our Medicaid program, and the federal government paid a large portion of it. When that emergency order ended, each state was told that you have to touch every person who had been eligible for your Medicaid program during COVID to determine their eligibility. So what we found was a fair number of individuals who ordinarily would never have applied for Medicaid, but came in under the COVID umbrella, are actually eligible for either Medicaid or the expansion. And we have seen an increase in the costs of providing the services. So to make a long story short, it's a $700 million hit.
However, people who are healthier because of it, right?
But we do have money, go ahead.
People are healthier because of it, though, right?
They're healthier, and, and the last thing we want is to have our uninsured rolls expand. But we're also under pressure. We think the federal government is probably likely to take away these subsidies on our exchange, which will affect people who ordinarily could get on the health exchange, but they need subsidies. We're not sure that those subsidies are going to remain. So we're really looking very carefully at how to patch together our healthcare safety net to make sure that our roles don't grow. So we've got that pressure, and the governor's always talking to us about his wonderful desire to have all these tax cuts. So we'll have lively budget discussions. I just say that in the context that I have read your program, and I agree with your policies, all of them. But the human service area is particularly close to my heart, has been for the 25 years I've been in elected office. And even when I was at H H S before O and B took over, I'm teasing, I'm teasing Mark, because he was first hired, I said, mm, you're from O and B, I have a heart. So we're going to do everything we can. There will be a movement to put money into the mobile crises units.
Yeah, good, they make so much sense.
They make a lot of difference, and it is a good diversion program. We are going to try to build out the community-based program, so fewer individuals end up in jail, and fewer individuals end up in a hospital emergency room. So we'll do our best, and we appreciate the work that you all are doing. Arlington and Fairfax has a pretty well-developed outpatient community-based program.
So piggybacking what you were saying, though, in terms of the desire for tax cuts, what you're really dealing with are the surpluses that were created because of the COVID response at the federal level in terms of the B I L, ARPA, everything else. And so these are not real surpluses, and the fact that he's trying to take that away by, you know, one-time tax cuts or additional business tax cuts, I think is counterproductive and harmful for a lot of the social safety net programs that we care about and that have been struggling. And so I've made it clear where I stand on this, and I've made it very clear that a lot of the kinds of programs that you are talking about in this package need to get the full funding they need, especially the fact that we are really on a cliff here in terms of the Medicaid funding.
Thank you.
And so, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and we talk about caring, because we all have good hearts and we all care, but I think there's such an economic bottom line to it. It's so short-sighted, you know, to cut this way and then cut people, so you have people who are, you know, sick, and they can't get healthcare, you've got kids who aren't being cared for, and you end up with a population that's not really providing, that's not able to accomplish what that population should be doing. That's, that's our, our wealth is actually in our people, and we need to take care of that in reasonable ways.
And these are families, and children are in the families, and, you know, it's a whole, it's a safety net issue, and it is the health of our community. And remember, a lot of the folks on, 70% of our folks on Medicaid expansion are working. So we have to think about that. But I appreciate your passion, I appreciate the compassion as well.
No, that's important. I just, you know, you talk to different types of people, they have different ways of looking at it, and some, and there's a, there's a really strong bottom line message to be made. I've been talking too much.
I was just going to add to that. I think for us, it is very much a workforce resilience issue, both in the near term of the 70% that are working, but also in the longer term of protecting our children and helping them grow into leaders in the workforce. So that may help with some of our colleagues, but for us, yeah, it's both the passion and the bottom line.
It is an economic vitality issue. And to the delegate's point, I mean, most economists are telling us we're going to be facing a recession. So if money goes out the door, if this one-time money goes out the door, but some of it is ongoing, if it goes out, goes out the door, we don't get it back. So if we hit bad times, then we're looking at having to really reduce funding for core services, and that, that is a problem. And of course, we're woefully underfunding at a state level, K through 12. Now, your schools are doing just great, because you all are willing to raise taxes and fund the schools at a robust level.
We're getting to a point where we can't do that anymore.
I know, I understand that.
And you missed, you were on the road, but we talked about the Daylight Study several times, and it's right there.
I've had a very long meeting with the school board, I've met with the superintendent, I've.
You're aware, yeah.
They're giving me all their little spreadsheets, and they seem to know who's on which committees.
Oh, good, that's great. Mr. Karen Thomas, your light is on.
Okay, I'll let you go on. Did you want to move on to another?
I know, I'm going to see what, I'm going to see what colleagues have got some things they want to add. We can continue discussing this.
Just for the, for the record, and so that the general public understands that, it is often said that in Northern Virginia, we have a lower class problem with medical insurance in general. Just anecdotally, here in Arlington, Virginia, we had statistical data from APA, which is true ground today, and 25% of the households who live in an APA building are not insured. So one out of four, these are working farm. So we have a silent crisis that was not mitigated, and it's still unmitigated today. So, and it will not be better right now. That gives me a lot of thought when we talk about the uninsured population and who needs to be covered with state funds.
And I think, I think Ms. Coffey, you're talking about around the world and how we're so third world in our approach to childcare. Let's just put medical care right there, too.
Where do you want to go?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's just, you know, how we're going to count, how we can compete in the world where everybody else feeds and cares for their people, but we don't, is a little beyond me. So, not that I feel strongly about it.
I would just add paid leave, which is a new element of our legislative priorities. We, we expanded our county paid leave up to 16 weeks in our budget this year, and I can't say I, for county employees, I can't say I have had a single other thing in the budget that employees have thanked me for more. Public safety employees, libraries employees, human services employees. The difference, it is the difference between them staying in their jobs and them leaving, is that extra month of paid leave that we gave them. And I know Senator Boisco carried the bill, and it was passed by the House and Senate last year, and unfortunately rejected by the governor. But I think it's, it's one of those things that would mean so much to our community to have access to paid leave, but that a county government just can't provide. And so we, we look to you to maybe have the governor see that it's, it's a workforce program, and the difference, you know, the, the loss in productivity of having so many women drop out of the workforce just to take care of their children is in the billions.
Yeah, we, I have been a chief co-patron on that bill. And of course, I put in the paid sick leave bill, and I did make progress, because I'm just diligent or tenacious or something. A few years ago, with consumer-directed home care workers now have up to five days of paid sick leave. That was the best I could get, I took a half a loaf. I'm going to keep working on the paid sick leave. I completely agree with everything you said on paid family leave, and it's a family-focused program. Because remember, individuals can stay home and take care of an elderly mother, take care of a child. There is, it's got a real family focus to it. I have spoken to the governor about this. He believes it right now is a burden on businesses. I think it's a recruitment and retention, and I think if everybody participated, we would be able to probably keep the cost manageable. So to get this through, we're going to have to, we're going to need the support of the governor and the clout that comes with it, and it's not going to happen this year.
One more year.
But, but we do, and we also need, frankly, we need the support of businesses.
Right.
If businesses believe this is a recruitment and retention program, they have to step up and help us figure out a reasonable way of funding this. So, and I, you know, I was looking at our unemployment insurance model and what the federal government is doing, and just seeing if we could tack something onto that. So a think tank is looking at that right now, trying really hard to come up with ideas to make it affordable and to make it available to everybody. But it's very clear to me, we're going to need the help of the executive branch.
Yeah, all right. Ms. Cunningham.
Is there any way we might pilot that as, as a pilot? You know, to have two or three employers opt in for a one-year, two-year period as a business-friendly and family-friendly effort?
We talked about that, well, to your point, so my version of a pilot was, I got a bill passed, and Youngkin signed it a few years ago, and it actually will allow for insurance plans in the Commonwealth to offer paid family leave. So this would be a vehicle for businesses who want to offer paid family leave to take this insurance plan and figure it out. We haven't had a lot of takers right now, but we haven't really marketed that either. So that was the best I could do, and we'll, we'll see what happens. This is the kind of thing, it's very difficult to do a pilot, because it gets very expensive.
But also, that was a huge step forward.
Yeah, I guess it was. I was swallowing a half a loaf, and I was happy, and I was there, okay, all right. But you're right, it was a step forward, so.
All right, I think we're good to move on to housing and land use, if that's all right? And we have, I think it's just three items there. Tenant rights, and I know Ms. Coffey will speak quite eloquently on that, I think. The Housing Trust Fund, of course, you know, increases in that to help, help us remove barriers to affordable housing, housing being a major issue nationwide, and certainly here. And land use policies, you know, protect the local, authority of local governments to plan, zone, and enforce their own land use policies without restricting what we can do. That's just basically a principle that needs to continue, because local government knows better what's going on in their local place.
I just have to interject something, and I, and I believe Delegate Lopez has been involved in these conversations as well. There is a group that I think is organized with the Interfaith Council. It's.
Oh, yes, we're familiar, we've been getting, we've been getting, yes, yes.
And they very much want us to pass legislation that would basically usurp your land use authority in a very minor way by dictating the height that could be afforded on a special-use church site for affordable housing. And I've tried to steer them more towards a process bill where you're going to be told to come up with an expedited process for affordable housing applications, and to maybe come up with something that is more doable for these special-use sites. I'm steering, personally, I'm steering away from just dictating the height or.
Well, that fits with the first, I think, one of the first principles we talked about all the time. Absolutely, I have delivered sort of the same message to, to that community as advocates.
It's, it's a very active community, and they have, you know, a really good issue, so.
We're familiar, thank you. Mr. DiFranti.
Just letting you know, bills will be coming forward. I don't know if they'll end up getting out of committee, they may end up going to a study commission.
Yeah, which is probably.
Yeah, so.
Mr. DiFranti.
The question from my meeting yesterday with that group, the question that, that I reflected on is whether there could be, the goal is to socialize the work that the enterprise community partners and, and the wonderful faith commitment to affordable housing. I wonder if there, if Senator Hashmi or those supporting the bill might be able to forward the idea by offering a permissive, just you adopt, approach to doing that on an individual basis? Because, you know, our, our third priority is discretion, and we've had lots of discussions about it. And certainly, I take their point that the Housing Trust Fund and funding our way out of this is not the only way forward. But I, I just wanted to articulate that, because just like you all, I had a, you know, a conversation, it's not easy, because you agree with the sentiment and the heart behind the effort. But, you know, that might not be a typical approach to have a sort of, localities can just permissively adopt that. And I know that's not what the group wants, but I just want to, and there is different moments when you can make progress in this area, but I just wanted to see if there's a way to articulate a potential salvageable point at this moment in time for that. And you don't have to comment, but I just, a permissiveness, because it does need to be socialized. This is an opportunity with congregations.
Of course, you do have that authority now.
That's correct.
Just to be clear.
100% correct.
Just to be clear. So I don't know exactly what's going to happen. It may end up going to the Housing Commission. I mean, the Virginia Association of Counties will have a forceful voice before the respective committees, and I'm sure that.
And I don't.
Represented, I'm sure, yeah, the liaisons representing other jurisdictions will be speaking, but.
I'm glad you raised it, I just wanted to.
It's an interesting topic.
It is, and sort of the assumption that what's right for one church right here is going to be absolutely right for everything else, and you can't, and the local, yeah, thank you, all right, good. We're on the same page.
Right, that's exactly right. The idea that the one-size-fits-all approach is, that might work here, someplace else is just false.
Right, right. Even, even in our community, there are different churches.
One approach we've been looking at when we get these land use questions is maybe requiring localities to consider the issue in their sector plans. So we're not telling you how to do it, but we're telling you, you have to consider it in your sector plan. So that may be a way of threading the needle this one time.
Well, and we have done a lot with some churches who have wanted to convert, put the affordable housing. We really have. It's a little complex, but we have done, yes.
I think there's not enough appreciation among, I mean, the, the interesting part of this proposal is that it affects a lot of, I mean, a lot of, there is a mass of, significant mass of potential projects. I mean, this is a generational thing. The procedural approach has the advantage that it makes clear, that just makes the localities, makes, gives us a position to facilitate the initial initiation part of a project like that, so that it is not so burdensome to do that. So I think procedural approach is a very good idea to work with that, and then study that to see how it works for the entire Commonwealth, because this is a completely different story, right? But it's a lot of, these are a lot of potential opportunities there.
I think I'll go to Ms. Cunningham, and then to you, Ms. Coffey. That's all right, Ms. Cunningham.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very brief one on the same topic, that one recommendation we receive from community members fairly frequently is to at least inventory those sites so that they're known, and that might be an easy thing to request from the various faith groups to, to just inventory them statewide. That might be useful.
Ms. Coffey, can you talk a little bit about tenant rights, because we are about to move on?
I will add one last comment on the faith.
And then move right to tenant rights.
Move right on, yes, absolutely. You know, I think, I think we're all agreed that removing barriers from developing affordable housing and making sure projects are more viable, we know that there's so many upfront costs that it just becomes unviable for a lot of these nonprofits to sustain. So removing those barriers is important, while also maintaining the processes that ensure things actually fit and are appropriately assessed for stormwater and are appropriately assessed for the impacts that they are actually having. I think if we can find a way to balance those two things, you know, that's something that I'm interested in, because we do. I'm interested in, because we do need to, to move with some speed on affordable housing. And I think we all agree with that end goal while, while maintaining some level of security in how we go about our projects. So moving on to tenant rights. Passion near and dear to my heart, as the first ever renter elected to this board, I, the number one thing I hear from people in our community is just the stress and strain which housing puts on their lives, and it's not, it's in the affordability category, but it's also in getting their landlords to email them back, getting their landlords to communicate with them in an appropriate way, things that the county has no authority to enforce right now. And so expanding both the rights that renters have, as well as the ability for the county to intervene in some of these situations, is really important, because people don't have the ability to hire an attorney to sue on their behalf, which is right now basically their only pathway if the county doesn't have money in the building. And so that's really important. The 60-day notification window is something that I've talked with a number of you about, that's from both personal experience and also talking to a number of constituents who have had their landlords come to them with 30 days or less before the end of their lease, saying, "I actually am not going to offer you a renewal, please find somewhere else to live." Maybe 30 days was sufficient in the past for finding somewhere new, but just to even identify a place to move into in Northern Virginia at this point in time, let alone pack all your things and actually move into it, it's just not enough now, and it's leaving people functionally homeless, sleeping on friends' couches while they figure places out to go, or in the case of some of my friends, accidentally moving to Reston because it was truly the only place that they could find somewhere on less than two weeks' notice. And so that's currently, hopefully, something that is pretty reasonable. I think a lot of the tenant protections that Virginia could add are things that should be relatively uncontroversial like this. I think landlords know 60 days in advance if they're not planning to rent their place out anymore. But I think other things, like having a right to counsel during eviction proceedings, people don't know the law, normal people don't know how to represent themselves in court, and to ask them to do it in one of the most stressful times of their life while they are losing, literally losing their home, is really not fair. And so the other one is a request from our Housing Commission, training for multifamily residential staff on what their responsibilities are currently under the Virginia Landlord-Tenant Act. There's just a lot of property managers who genuinely will tell you, "Oh, I don't, I don't think we have to do that," and you can show them the law, and they're like, "Well, I've never heard of that." And so if they had to be actually trained on that, it would be much easier to have a conversation as a renter to say, "No, we both are on the same page about what it is that you're obligated to do, what it is I'm obligated to do," and it makes for a much healthier relationship, so.
All right, thank you.
We had some tenant rights bills that actually passed each chamber, and I don't believe anything got, got signed into law.
No, no.
There's a pattern here.
Yeah, I had, I had two, two tenant rights bills in particular that passed both chambers and then got vetoed by the governor, and they actually had landlords and tenants on board. We all got together, got in a room, but he ended up rejecting it and then vetoing it for absolutely no reason. But I do plan to look at bringing some form of those bills back and then also carrying that 60-day bill. I know that's been a longstanding problem, especially within the tenant rights arena. And actually, believe it or not, it just happened to me with an infant, and so, but I was able to talk to my landlord to at least get an extension so we're not moving in the middle of December. So it's, it's definitely something that we plan to carry in the, in the upcoming session.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Just to piggyback on that, I mean, I think everybody knows that I've been working in this, this lane for my entire time in the House. My legislation created the Virginia Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It took it from $6 million to around $175 million right now. And so, and I also put in several tenants' rights bills last year. That got passed by both chambers, including the junk fees bill, including the council, and, or trying to address some of the council issues and not getting it passed. The governor is basically listening to the AOB, to AOB and that lobby. And any change will be fought tooth and nail. And so, you know, just, I understand, I mean, to piggyback on something you said, not just someone who maybe is not versed in the nuances of tenant rights, but what about an immigrant who is just learning English, trying to navigate these processes? I had a junk fees bill last year that would simply say, "Here are all the costs of what it's going to take to rent this apartment," because people are being charged extra because they have to, an extra fee of $50 to use a computer system to pay your, to pay your rent, an extra charge for every time someone from the building comes to fix a light, a light or paint something, on top of what the actual cost is. Extra fees for taking out the trash that are not included in the actual advertisement of what the apartment has. And these are not things that are happening just in some of the four jurisdictions in Virginia that were among the top four in the country for evictions and for slumlord-like conditions. These are happening along the Columbia Pike corridor. And so we have a great deal of work that needs to be done in the area of tenants' rights. I want to be realistic about what this governor is willing to do, or rather, what he's more than happy not to do, despite the fact that we're doing all we can. So please be patient with how this process plays out.
Yeah, and I hope that as we work through these things, there's a whole lot of messaging to people about what it is, what you're trying to do, and who it is that's preventing this from happening. Sometimes I feel like we Democrats are pretty bad at messaging, because there's just, it's so unjust and unfair, what's going on, and most people, if they understood it, I think, would be pretty appalled. But somehow, we don't get that message out, I think, like we should. And I'm sorry, go ahead, I think you wanted to say something.
We need to talk about it, Libby, because it's, it's an issue that comes up across the Commonwealth, surprisingly. It's not just the high-cost areas, so we should do a better job at messaging. I have one small, slight silver lining to tell you. A few years ago, I did get a bill passed that would require individuals that are in a designated affordable unit, if there was going to be a change, that they have to be notified of the, of the closest neighborhood legal services or a state referral to neighborhood legal services. And that was a heavy lift.
Yeah.
So, but we had a trifecta at that time. So that's a small silver lining, but yeah, my, yeah.
Mr. DeFranti?
We'll keep fighting the good fight.
No, you keep, keep it up. Mr. DeFranti?
Just really appreciate, Ms. Coffey, your leading on this, and, you know, but also Delegate McClure and, Delegate Lopez and you senators. The one thing I wanted just to highlight, because I'm mindful of, I like, I'd rather know the truth about what this administration won't do than, than to pontificate about what might happen. But I would love to just have a conversation with you, Delegate Lopez, a little bit about where AOB is on the last phrase there, on the required training. Because anytime you get lawyers involved, that's hard in terms of these worlds. And I say that as a recovering lawyer who absolutely would support, you know, allowing more lawyers to have the rights to protect the people that we're focused on. But the required training, at least if AOB is going to take a position against this, this piece, I would like to start to prepare and say, "Really? Are you going to take that?" I, I'd just like to make them feel it a little bit, because...
Can I ask what you're referring to, Matt? Where's the required training? Are we still on page three of this document?
It's line of C1.
C1, last line.
C1, okay, thank you.
It was, it was from the Housing Commission, and Ms. Coffey's entirely right, they came up with it, and it just struck me as something that, you know, if I am against everything, it might be nice to have one thing to be for if I'm these groups. Now, that doesn't mean it will pass the governor's test, but I'd just like to have a conversation about a little advocacy and whether this is plausible. I know lots is not plausible.
Yeah, lots plausible.
But let's...
But I've never actually met anything that AOB is for.
You're on C1, you're talking about local taxing authority on page three?
No, this is, this is tenant rights.
Oh, you've got, you may have the old version of our packet.
I have something that was dated December 3rd. Isn't today December 3rd?
Yes.
It is, but that's...
Yeah, we see the updated document.
All right, everybody, let Alana, Alana, head, my floor.
Senator Evan, I sent an updated package earlier this afternoon at about 2:00. That is the version that we are working from today.
Yeah, I thought I printed it out, but anyway, I'll just listen on while I'm talking about the past, some past years.
Adam, the line is, and a required training for multifamily residential staff of their responsibilities under the Virginia Rental-Landlord and Tenant Act.
Yeah, I don't see that on page three of what's dated 12th.
Right, I'm just saying, that's what it says, that's what we're referring to.
Yeah, okay, I can't see it. But our receipt was dated December 3rd, and it doesn't...
We could put in budget language that just directs the Department of Housing and Community Development to do this.
Yeah, anything you could do?
I mean, the narrative...
You can get through the governor's line item, yeah.
The narrative of that, on that was always from AOB, "Oh, we don't need a mandated thing, we do it anyways, it's good business practice."
Well, we wouldn't be mandating them. I can't, we can't mandate nonprofits to do anything, but we can mandate state agencies, that's where our line of accountability is. So we could mandate that the Department of Housing and Community Development create a training program and, working with partners, and that this training program get out there.
Great.
The nonprofits normally train their people, and they don't change their memory.
We'll give them a module, and we'll, we'll let them work with our Department of Community and Housing Development. How's that?
All right. Okay, I think, are we ready to move to finance? I'm, I'm trying to get us sort of out of here by eight, and we're, if that's okay.
I will put a budget amendment into that.
Thank you.
Alana, would you mark that for me? Or my staff might be on the call.
They are, you've got two of your staff.
I was trying to get Senator...
Or at least they started with it.
Lily and Holly, don't let me forget that.
Okay. The next section, we have Section D is under, and Adam, Mr., excuse me, Senator Evan, for you, it's, we're, Section D now, Finance, is what we're looking at now. And I'll just point out a couple, the local taxing authority, I mean, it's pretty basic. Please don't take away any of our taxing authority, don't force us to just, and then if you decide to take something away and modify it, please let us find another way to have alternative forces, sources of revenue. It's just kind of reasonable. We got to fund all kinds of things here locally to make sure people can drink the water and go to school and all of those kinds of good things, so don't take away our...
Remember those days.
Yes, don't take away our resources to do it. Also, similar line vein was the sales tax on groceries, you know, don't, don't exempt that unless you're going to provide something to, to replace the revenue. Real estate assessments, want to make sure that we've got, we can use industry standards and have fair market value, don't, don't make any limits on the accessory's ability to have a fair assessment. Excess clerk fees, I remember this one vaguely, we, we had that sort of taken away, I think it, that was clerk, clerk of the court, Ferguson, remember this one? Yeah, and it's never come back. So they just sort of amended the formula and took away a third of our funding for larger jurisdictions, not for everybody, just for us, so we'd like to take that back. I don't know if there's anybody, anything anyone wants to say about any of this, maybe we'll just keep moving on?
County Board when this happened, I mean, a few states or some, they don't...
Yeah, probably because they had a surplus and spent it all and didn't save it, but that's another point. Well, yeah. Transportation, and obviously Womata, you know, the dedicated, dedicated funding, Mr. DeFranti may want to talk about that a little bit, he's very active on the, on the group working to try to solve that, that long-term forever problem for Womata to have a good dedicated source of operating capital funding. And NVTA, remember, they took away, the state decided to provide funding for the state of good repair and said they were providing it, and it wasn't that nice, and they took it from us. We'd like to have that, have that money back again. And then towing, a perennial favorite, and I know Delegate Lopez, you've been doing a lot in the, in the area of towing, and this one's particularly to just let us have better, you know, provide better consumer protections for people, because sometimes we can't even really provide good protections for people.
Private action bill, 2023.
You've got your, you want to turn your mic on?
Towing.
Towing bill.
Yeah, but what they're trying to, like, so this is very different from what Adele and I did...
Correct.
Last year, and like Adele's bills...
About what you did in 2023 as well.
That, well, I had a bill that we amended to get what we did pass last year, and Adele had a similar bill, actually, that addressed some real important aspects of the towing bill, but Adele's on the call, she can speak to this, not me. Or Miss Ken.
But you, you did have a right of private action, a separate bill.
To speak of what you're, you're talking about, we had a...
Yeah, mine was regarding...
Oh, yeah.
Passing an ordinance for permitting.
Right, which is what was in the county package last year.
Right, so speaking, speaking of what you're talking about here, the idea of tying all of the issues of towing into a consumer protection, and the idea that a private right of action would be, would enable some balance in how predatory towers act in the Commonwealth, especially in Planted District Eight, which is the Northern Virginia region of the state. This was viewed as a bridge too far by many folks, and that's why we came back with, Adele and I partnered on doing the second signature and, as well as the ability to have some real guardrails around what the predatory towing folks do in Northern Virginia and specifically in Arlington, and what they're allowed to get away with. I would love to go down the road of doing a private right of action and doing the consumer protection aspect of this, because the fact that, you know, at the time, individuals were not allowed to sue folks.
Only the Attorney General.
Only the, and we were able to fix all that in the bill we passed last year, the most egregious aspects of it. But there are still, I think, some opportunities to go a little bit further.
It's another one of those half-loafs, making progress.
No, but, you know, let's put it this way, before we were able to actually get what the bills we got passed, there was language in the code that says, that said, they were able to charge you $180, but if you took them to court...
Right.
The only, you couldn't take them to court, the only person who could take them to court was the Attorney General of Virginia. And then if that person was successful in court, they could only get $150 back, but the, the towor was allowed to charge you $180, all right? And then the person who took the person, who took the towing agency to court...
So this was written by the towers.
Could not get the money, it had to go to the literary fund of Virginia. So a complete disincentive for people to actually engage and hold, hold accountable the towers.
Right, right.
And so the fact that that was in the code, you know, made people's...
Yeah.
They were like, "What are you talking about? That's in the code?"
Yeah, so we fixed that, yeah, you fixed it.
So we fixed that, but now if we went further and allowed people to actually individually take the towers to court, that would be a huge step in the right direction.
It's, it's, it's good for people, actually, even people watching, to, to listen to how crazy the code is sometimes and how problematic it is. Again, good information, we need to be getting good information out there. A couple of other issues, and I will invite Mr. DeFranti to talk just a little bit about the funding for tow, if he would like. Number four on this is, is the funding for regional transportation to improve mobility, but it's really just talking about ensuring that the Commonwealth carry through with its agreement with Amazon, that they had made agreements that they were going to improve transportation. We want to make sure that they meet that obligation that they had. Just want to kind of remind you that that obligation is there, I think.
Your team is working with BDOT, I think.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they are, I think it's...
So you'll have to alert us if, if there's a problem.
If there's a problem, okay, yeah, just want, this is just kind of a, you know, we've kind of forgotten about all of those things, but just to remember, it's still, it's still coming. And of course, Vision Zero wants support for that. On the autonomous vehicles, support in urban study, you know, we just don't want to have, if somebody wants to check how autonomous vehicles work, we want to make sure we have all kinds of safeguards before they start driving around our streets. So a study would be good to at least look at that. Mr. DeFranti, would you like to talk a little bit about Womata or anything else in transportation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think it would be, based on the way things seem to transpire with Womata funding last time, I would be very surprised if there was enough, you know, I know where the Senate and the House majorities are on protecting the two-year agreement that was in Womata, so I'm confident there, but it's so existential for Arlington, as you, as you all know, that worth mentioning. And then for our public, and at the risk of not getting into too much detail, we are taking you up on the authority that Delegate McClure and you, Delegate Lopez, helped us get on towing. And I suspect if any, if today is an indication that there will be, in addition to the desire to, to do better, there will be some significant defense of where, the progress that we made that I, that may be, you know, there. And so just a big thank you to you, Delegate Lopez, and to Delegate McClure for the work on that, and we will be, we have it on our agenda for the next month, just for our public to, we had an RTA, and we have the next, the next stage. Well, I mean, you know, from having been in these seats, it's not barn burning, but it is, it may be worth for your, for your consideration.
One caveat there.
Yeah.
In the suggested plan that was put forward to the board, you're giving away additional[617.67][617.67]$20 for each tow. In the bill, that was a may, that's not a shall.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to figure out why, in a county that's only, you know, 26 square miles, you need to give away an extra $20 for a gas fee to the towers.
It's a fair, a fair concern and fair critique. We are also, as you know, doing an extensive permitting system and net, I think there's, it depends on the month that you're focusing on gas prices. But as part of the extensive regulation, as your bill's really focused on, it's the, it's the behavior that we want to improve. And so it's a fair concern and fair critique. We haven't taken a final step on it. And your concerns here are also ones that you've for sure shared, and I take them to heart. That doesn't mean I know where I'll, 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 we'll land on it, but it's, it's fair to do. What I really want to do is make sure we can set up a strong permitting system and enforce that permitting system.
All right, we, we good, oh, Mr. Karen Tonas.
Just in addition on, on point number five, the automated speed and intersection enforcement. I know that last year we had maybe three bills, maybe more than that, to go beyond the limitation of being able to, to, to enforce with automated, with speed cameras, only on school slow zones and work zones. To go beyond that, it's absolutely, yesterday I was in a meeting with almost 50 neighbors in, in the house because we had an accident on South Cornet Springs. We had cameras there. We can show that the, the, the behavior improves with them. Still, but the problem is that we have a lot more points where we have significant challenges and we, we have, we are in a, in a place where driving has become quite reckless and the, the consequences are really mitigated by being able to enforce flexibly with automated means. It's also an equity issue because, you know, there is no police enforcement involved. It's also an economic issue for us. And so I think that having the flexibility to apply automated speed enforcement where it is needed, based on how we measure our, our, you know, the, the risk on our streets and how our communities understand that, is a welcome ability. We would love to be able to do that.
Microphone, remember there are millions of people listening, yes?
There are a lot of jurisdictions that would like this local authority, and I think it would be helpful. But when I sat on transportation for many years that I did, when we'd get similar bills and they would always be defeated because folks would interpret this authority to be, oh my gosh, there'll be more fines, or there'll be more tickets, or we have to save constituents from the local governments. I mean, that was the argument.
They want to let people speed, so they want to make sure people are allowed to break the law. We had some emails that kind of said that when we were going in. Just wanted to sort of put it in those terms.
Yeah, they missed the context that you were really trying to save constituents from being hit, et cetera, et cetera. You're improving safety. That point would always get lost based on the context of other lawmakers. So I guess my point is, could you please work with some of the regional legislative assistance and get, really get a regional push behind this and maybe even, you know, elevate it to VACO? This is a really worthwhile request. And you'll have lots of fellow jurisdictions that would be willing to back it. We just need a very strong effort to put it forward.
Happy to do that. I came, last year I testified to all three bills. And colleagues from Northern Virginia were there as well. We, and we worked also with the Black Caucus who had concerns, and I understand these concerns. They have very valid concerns. They are all workable, in my opinion. What has happened here is that we have, our streets are not only used by, mostly by car drivers, and then there are a few pedestrians. Now we have a lot more pedestrians after, after the pandemic. They want their kids to be safe on the streets. They want to be able to bike on the streets, et cetera. So speed enforcement begins to be critical for, for, you know, reducing the risk.
Multimodal community that wants to reduce car use.
Reducing a very real risk to very real people. So happy to work harder on that with people here in Northern Virginia.
I really think it's very worthwhile and we can figure out how to get this through.
And using the automatic, I mean, it saves money. You have people there, it's got the equity thing, yeah.
It's something that all of us liaisons talk about all the time, and we've been working together to, you know, stand up and committee. Many of us have it in our packages. I think there's other forces at play that maybe there's some misinformation being shared. I know that Delegate Sebold is planning to bring back a bill this session. I've been working with her on that. And so I think.
Keep working on this, even if it has to do with Section 1 Bill.
Yeah, I think it's a really important, important piece, yeah.
No, it is, and it saves money because it doesn't, it makes a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, I agree with you.
By saving lives. I'm always trying to get those two values balanced. Can we move to economic development? Yeah, go ahead.
Quick thing, with regard to autonomous vehicles, are there, is there an initiative to try to do that in Arlington? Because, you know, I've been to several cities where I've seen autonomous vehicles work very well. I'm just curious as to whether or not that's coming.
I think there has been, yes.
Yes, so, so two things. So Waymo is doing a pilot in DC, and they are storing their vehicles in Arlington. They're, once they cross over the bridge right now, they are actually like putting the person there and driving, so they're not breaking the law. But I also know that Senator Saleem has went, has been inspired by this as well and wants to really get ahead of the issue as localities are dealing with, how do you, you know, how do you work with having motorized vehicles and also autonomous vehicles on the roadway? What's the safety oversight, the data collection, things like that? So I do anticipate that you will see a bill this session on this issue.
Yep. Okay, I think we've had an economic development, and I just, we have three here, and I thought, Mr. Schwartz, I don't want to really put you exactly on the spot, but do you want to just give a little summary of where we are in vacancy rates and what's going on with that? I think our delegation might not be as aware as we are right now.
So we, we check that on a quarterly basis. Right now, we have unfortunately set a record. We're at 24.3% vacancy rate in our commercial office market. And we think that's a bit of an undercount sometimes because of subleases that aren't picked up by CoStar when they do the, that assessment. And so that's going to come home to roost in our commercial office assessments that will come out probably over the next 35 to, 30 to 45 days. We're going to see a significant drop in value, just due to the vacancies.
Yeah, so that, it's, it's a huge hit for us. You're, you're aware because you sat on this board and you know how important that is. So that's some of the background here, just that you should, you should have. So obviously, you know, anything that the state can do to help us with, you know, development policies and programs, and also certainly repositioning, and we're doing a lot of work on repositioning. We've just done our commercial resiliency.
Last year, we spoke about a grant that could be made available to localities that are trying to repurpose office space. I don't know where that is. It, we decided to walk away from it last year. There wasn't a uniform voice on what this grant program should look like and how it should be administered. So.
Maybe we'll get, because we are, we are doing, I mean, we've just passed some things to add flexibility, to make it easier to do those conversions. I mean, we're trying to do that. I think we are.
What support do you need from the state in order to take the office buildings and turn them into affordable housing, to take the office buildings and turn them into schools?
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of cost involved, and I'll see if anybody who's professional, like perhaps the manager could tick this one off.
I mean, at its base, it's a funding request, and usually we are not seen sympathetically down in Richmond when we say, we're from Arlington, we have this need, but it is a, it's a core structural problem we have with our, our budget and our community. We'll work through it over the next five to 10 years, but in the meantime, we need help.
So it's like incentives, so there's a cost. If you've got an empty building and you want to change it to residential, it's office, you take it down, you can save the parking garage sometimes, and that helps, but to make it pencil out, it still sometimes isn't worth doing. And then it sits empty or gets sold. And we want it not to sit empty, so it could be some ways to provide incentives and some grants just to kind of prime the pump and get it started.
I just would add that the convert, conversion from office space to residential space is really challenging because of the size of floor plates, the ceiling heights, and the plumbing. Office buildings are not configured from a utility standpoint, the way that you need a residential building to be configured. Sometimes that means gutting entire, you know, floor to ceiling, the inside, at a, at a point where it's actually the same cost to just tear the building down and build it new. And so we have some buildings that are great candidates. We just passed our, part of our Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative, the ability to do these residential conversions on a streamlined process, but we aren't anticipating that every single building in Arlington County that is a commercial building that's obsolete will even be looking to do this just because of how challenging it is from an architectural design standpoint.
Ms. Cunningham, and then Mr. Karen Tonas, Ms. Cunningham.
So I would add a couple things. Obviously, the Housing Trust Fund would be helpful to have a deeper pool there to drive the affordable housing. There may be some building code exceptions that could be really helpful. So if you think about a really deep floor plate of an office building, if you're going to make a four-bedroom apartment, you might be happy to have some of those bedrooms not have a window, even though they have plenty of natural light and plenty of ways out, but you can't do that by Virginia's building code today. So there might be some flexibility you might allow in sort of non-conforming or local exceptions. And then a third area that, that could be considered is low interest loan, like a revolving fund of some sort, which is what we do on some of the affordable housing sides, but it really, the financing markets are just outpriced, I would say. You know, the, the cost of lending is very high.
Right, yeah, we are getting into a period with long-term interest rates continuing to go up. So, you know, for a while, they were coming down, and, and I've talked to some developers, it was like, they were kind of really getting ready, and then all of a sudden, you know, what's happening across the river, we're likely to see interest rates just go back up again, and it won't, and it won't work. So, yeah, some funds may help.
It's a roller coaster.
I think, Mr. Karen, I just wanted to say.
Madam Chair, if I just finish with one last thing. The, the other question I think that's on all our minds is the federal use of, of office space, and so I think that might be also an area for, for many parts of the Commonwealth to think about in the event that there is a significant contraction in workforce or presence in the Commonwealth. Is there some bridge fund there to help reposition those buildings faster, those that are vacated?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Karen Tonas? Yeah, we kind of need a bridge, is what we're.
Repositioning also to, in addition to everything that was mentioned, unfortunately, the majority of our commercial buildings are, you know, late 60s, 70s, so they are very, very difficult to convert into housing to begin with. But what, what we have sometimes, very often, is that we have a building that's only half, has like 30% or 40% occupancy, and another one that has also 30 and 40% occupancy. So in an ideal world, we will be able, you would be liking to swap them, so we have one building with 70% occupancy and one that's completely empty and up, and, and, you know, game for, available in market for, for a better use. And, and this, having tax incentives to that, or, or monetary incentives to that, that we cannot afford, would be also very beneficial for the Commonwealth, because this keeps the, this economy working and creates against, again, this, this critical mass that we, that is good for economy to work.
When we did the Roseland Sector Plan, we, we were trying to get new buildings, we were trying to get rid of older buildings, et cetera, et cetera. We just, the incentives we used for developers was really extraordinary, high heights and density. I don't know if that would be enough. If you could achieve an empty office building, the developer would have to raise it and then have the incentive to actually build something.
So we've got, I think, I think Mr. Schwartz wants to say something about that.
I think, you know, we have, our experience with the development community right now is that even giving them that additional density actually sort of compounds the problem for them, because it doesn't pencil out. But VDP, which has been a fantastic partner for us, does not have any solid programs that basically say, we'll help you stay here. We're always, we always go to them when we're competing with another jurisdiction, whether it's DC or Maryland. They're very helpful, but they're not geared to this kind of environment where we actually need to retain and keep and reinvent, as Mr. Karen Tonas was saying. And I know that's something that isn't going to change overnight, but I think it's a philosophy that I think, you know, we, we're affected here in, in Arlington, but I think you'll see this in other jurisdictions to a lesser degree, but it's something that they just haven't spent a lot of time thinking about, and it would be helpful if they did.
Okay, well, we can have those conversations, for sure.
The world is really changing here. That's what, you know, I wanted, in a lot of ways, so.
And bottom line, tourism dollars are important for us, very important for us. We have seen that with increased tourism dollars in the last three years, we made, we made up for the losses in the pandemic right now. There are thousands of workers who work in our hospitality industry. This is an industry that produces almost, has a, a volume of $4.1 billion a year. It's, people spend in Arlington almost $12 million a day, a month, sorry, and this is, this is significant. So the promotion dollars, the state-supported tourism promotion of Northern Virginia has actually worked, worked very well. A lot of people didn't believe that, and now we have evidence of that. So we don't want this to go back to where it was, which was very inadequate.
No, we, we need the choice of that, just to, so you gain and we gain.
Exactly.
It's a nice symbiotic relationship.
More Dave Matthews commercials in other states.
Ms. Cunningham?
I was just going to tag on to that, that the, one of the uses of office buildings that are beyond their useful life in this market is for tourism and for, for hotels. And so it might be that, you know, some statewide effort to attract more hotels or some incentives to bring a couple of the players in.
Do you know, I was thinking of single-room occupancy, because it's, that's a form of housing which might help you transition homeless folks into permanent housing. And, you know, you can have a maybe shared kitchen and, and living space, but, you know, smaller bedrooms like a hotel. And you probably could, in some of the areas where you have vacant office spaces, maybe you could turn it into single-room occupancy. It's not as elaborate as, you know, the condos or apartments you were talking about. But, and it does address the housing shortage too, especially for folks at the very lower income strata. So think about that, and we'll see if we can maybe get you some.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, we all need to be creative and flexible and to deal with the changes coming down. So thank you for that. Are we good to move on to criminal justice? No, yes, criminal justice reform, that's right. This is, we're on, we're on item G, Senator Evan, if you're trying to follow along on the wrong.
I just want to be mindful.
I'm following on the sheet I was sent at 2:00 today.
Perfect. Just to be mindful, we only have about 15 more minutes to get through.
I know, yeah, I know, I'm working on it. We, we.
This is fine.
We'll get there, we'll.
We'll get there, don't worry.
All right. Criminal justice reform, and this one, you know, you've got it here, obviously, on, on immigration, we, we, we have, we don't have, we have a shortage on police. We can't do the federal government work for them and make sure that we're not trying to require, I know you do.
Completely agree.
Yeah, and how we're supposed to be able to do that and do the local work too is beyond me. I think we'll talk about a little bit, you know, better funding for the prosecutor public defender's offices to sort of get it, you know, on, on parity, and be nice to have some reimbursable positions. Now that we're doing the body worn cameras, which is great for transparency, there, there's an expense because it's quite involved in looking at the video, following.
Right, it's actually viewing the footage, right? It takes a lot of time, yeah.
And then fraud and abuse, and I am not as familiar as I should be with this. I remember listening to it and thinking it made a whole lot of sense. The last one, number six, creating a mechanism in the state code so you can freeze funds that are fraudulently stolen and return the assets to the vulnerable populations. I think sometimes they get frozen and they go somewhere else, so the victims don't actually get the money back. And I'm not real clear about, Ms. Moroff, maybe you can talk about that a little more.
In code right now, there's no way to freeze the funds during the investigation process. So while the police officers and FBI are investigating what happened to your money, it can, you know, be sent around to lots of different places.
Cases, and this is the bill you'd like me to carry it. I'm carrying a bill for you that will enable the funds to be frozen while the investigation's going.
That's what this is, yes, thank you. Thank you for carrying that bill.
We'll, we'll carry it. It's an extension of a bill, but I'm carrying that.
Thank you so much.
For all their doubts, this is extremely important.
And vulnerable, other vulnerable populations, but yes, that is correct.
Time is mostly of the essence. The longer it's been since.
And time is mostly of the essence. The longer it's been since the money was stolen, the less likely it is to be returned to the person it was stolen from.
And I've got it in for drafting, so I'll share it with you when I get a draft.
Yeah, thank you. And then moving on to general government, no unfunded mandates, so I'm sure that shocks you. This has been around for a long time. And the electronic meeting, we are, you know, gradually getting to it. I mean, we really need as much flexibility as we can, particularly for, you know, our advisory commissions and things to just be allowed to meet electronically, which was one of the few benefits, I think, to come out of the pandemic, that we learned how to do that, and it makes it so much easier for people who are, like Delegate McKeer, she could be home with her baby and participate, and Senator Eben, et cetera.
Well, these virtual platforms are here to stay, and I guess, and your argument is very well taken, when so many underrepresented groups that really, for obvious reasons, can't afford to go out to a meeting in person. They may have to get up early the next day. They may have family responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera. They can link in, either on their phone or on a computer.
Also, it's critically important for the disabled community as well.
Right, absolutely.
And the elderly community.
Absolutely, absolutely. Broadband access, I think we all probably agree broadband is like, you know, electricity and water. I mean, it just, everybody needs to have it, and we need to support that for folks who are lower income. And then I think I'll, I'm gonna kind of keep rolling here a little bit, so just stop me if I should.
No, that's fine. If we have something to eliminate, we'll stop.
Yeah. Public safety and emergencies, in that section, just maintain the ongoing funding that we, that we need. And obviously, jail diversion efforts, we're always trying to work on that, and that saves money in the long run and improves lives. And then the swatting that we worked on before, thank you. You know, we just want to continue to do more there and support full restitution of the costs, not, not a limited to it, apart for the hoax callers.
You have a bill going in this year.
I don't know if we do.
We do not?
Not yet.
So maybe 2026. Put it on that.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Energy, environment, and climate change. Reggie, yes, let's, me and Reggie, I think I know that.
Well, the court rules in favor of the General Assembly's position.
Yep, so maybe that will, maybe that will work. Obviously, protecting our clean, clean energy and doing what we can to have solutions that prioritize, you know, energy storage and all of those kind of things that get us away from the fossil fuels. Public-private partnerships have down there to help whatever we can do to help supply more, you know, charging for electric vehicles.
Got a bill on municipal energy aggregation in that area.
Yeah, say that again.
Do you want number four?
Yeah, no, number three.
Oh, good for you.
Yeah, except you said that so quietly while I was talking. I didn't hear what you said, Delegate.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's about municipal energy aggregation. It's amendments 56589. It should basically remove some barriers preventing counties from aggregating residential, commercial, and industrial customers, and let them easily, more easily shop for either green blend or 100% renewable power.
Excellent. And I think that's what number four is. That's what number four-
It gets signed. Yeah, I thought that was number four too, but that's okay.
No, I think it's both. I think it fits in both, probably. Yeah.
It's extremely critical. We are one of the biggest markets here.
We, I will just say, this governor has been a challenge when it comes to energy issues and the environment. So, so much is done at the administrative level in terms of actually implementing regulations, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah. I was the chief co-patron of the Virginia Clean Economy Act and helped write, draft a bunch of sections of it, and also defended it on the floor when, when we got it passed. And so the fact that the governor's now, from what I hear, gunning to, you know, upend several sections of it, using the fact that we have to increase the energy output on the grid as an excuse for, you know, SMRs or other things that are going to be overly costly, incredibly costly, and also still don't address any of the waste issues, including the spent fuel rods, is problematic despite-
Is that, is that on Arlington's legislative agenda, Alfonso?
The defending number-
SMRs, is that what we're talking about now? Are we?
No, I'm talking about the Protect Virginia Clean Economy Act.
Okay.
Section J, I think, three and four, mostly four.
Four, okay.
Two, I was referring back to two before we moved on.
Oh, sorry, back to two. Oh, yes, you were. I'm sorry.
Just, just keep in mind that whatever the narrative is at the national level regarding energy and the environment, we're going to face the same narrative in Richmond.
Right.
I think anything we can do, though, to also encourage and support even homeowners getting, you know, rather than building and needing more energy, if we had more solar on individuals, that they would not need as much. And I think, I find sometimes dominion power is not as helpful as it could be in encouraging people to do that. In fact, they've just taken away, I think, the net metering. Yeah, so that's, that seems to be counterproductive. Yes. Mr. DiFranti?
It's the State Corporation Commission that's going to make the net meter, make a net metering decision.
That's right.
Has it occurred or not yet?
Not tomorrow.
No.
And it's in the coming months, right?
Probably. I can't swear to it.
Well, I would, I don't know whether it's, I'd love to stay up to date on that.
Okay.
Because, you know, there's the legislative piece and then the State Corporation Commission's decision, and I think that they were, they're asking for, you know, tens of thousands of homeowners across Virginia to get really upset if they make this decision that they're, but that doesn't mean they won't make it anyway. And so I just would love for, to the extent that you know more than we do, or you-
Yeah, we can, we'll keep you updated.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure our staff, our staff will as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was under the impression that people are grandfathered in. If they get in, they got the net metering, and then they sign an agreement, but new people, not, not even grandfathered in.
I'm not sure about the grandfather. Maybe I'll have to go back, if you don't mind.
No, 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 that's fine. It'll be interesting. Yeah, as we're just about to put some solar on a roof, so I'd like to know.
I would add that is a, kind of a critical business-friendly element as well, for, because we have many businesses who want to be able to have 100% renewable and have it on-site for resilience purposes. Also, likely some cost savings to prevent additional grid strain on the electric grid. And then the final piece is that our schools, and I know Fairfax has particularly exercised about this, but our schools really can benefit, and that can help with the overall K-12 funding, so that we, instead of, you know, wasting the solar energy, we're able to convert that and then educate the kids. So, all of those may be angles that could be helpful.
And another angle is public safety, because if you've got the grid, the grid, you have problems with the grid because of the duratio or whatever, if homeowners have got solar and a battery backup, which is expensive but can be supported, then they've got power, and you've got fewer people that are in cold in the dark, or the heat in the dark. And it really is a public safety issue as well.
I'll just tell you, getting the balance right, from my perspective, and probably you and I share the same perspective, has been a challenge. I mean, you know, there are all these thresholds in the Clean Economy Act that Dominion is expected to meet, but now the interpretation of whether those thresholds, what those thresholds are is surprising. It is going before the SEC.
As the goal line keeps moving.
Well, yeah, and I mean, you can write laws as clearly as you think you can, but at the end of the day, the SEC is balancing these business interests, and we have yet to expand the SEC authorizing legislation to direct them to, to consider other factors other than rates.
You're talking about COVID?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, you're talking about.
So, we're going to do our best. I mean, I think if the SEC had broader authority, perhaps we would end up with decisions that made more sense from multiple perspectives.
All right. Long-term strategy here. Mr. Karen Tonas?
Oh, nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Nothing more than-
All right. Mr. DiFranti and then Ms. Cunningham.
On gas-powered leaf equipment, is that a Delegate Sullivan thing?
Oh, this is the leaf?
We have the tree canopy.
Have you ever heard of leaf blowers? They run on gas. They make a lot of noise.
Yes, there were a couple of bills last year that dealt with this.
Do you know if it has bipartisan support, or?
It was, it was actually, we had stuff that addressed parts of it.
Yeah.
And so, for instance, Alexandria had a bill that said, "Allow us to create our own program and fund it ourselves so that we can then provide certain, like, equipment to the localities for small businesses, for homeowners to use on a rental basis." And some of that included electric, electric equipment to use in your, on your yard, getting rid of the loud diesel runs of leaf blowers. And it was vetoed by the governor after it passed. And so I guess what I'm saying is, for some reason, that kind of sensible, right, right-headed legislation is still going to be a problem. I think it will take a while until we, I think next year we might be able to get it passed.
Okay.
Are there going to be bills on the-
There'll be a bill.
I'm sure there'll be a bill.
I don't know who's carrying that bill at this-
You don't know if-
I don't know if Delegate Sullivan is putting it back in or not.
Really?
You're not doing anything on it, are you?
No, like, I'm working with Alexandria on the one bill that we worked on, and they're not doing it this year.
Okay.
Yeah. Obviously, we support any legislation that can help us conserve and expand the tree canopy.
Now, Patrick Hope had a bill that-
He did. I don't know how that did. Not great.
I would support that bill.
Yeah. So we'll see what, what comes out. Just want to be, you know, on the record that that's something that's important to us.
I think it did get signed, yeah.
Yep. And I, Ms. Moroff might correct me, but I believe on the storm, the stormwater local assistance funds, I think we're coming down to, you know, there are these limits of the total maximum daily loads, and then we've got these goals that we keep meeting. They get harder and harder to meet, and it's maybe even approaching impossible. I'm not sure about that.
We fully funded, we fully funded SLAF last year.
Good, excellent. Thank you. Because it needs, and probably updating the, I was saying, updating the evaluation too. Ms. Moroff, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. It's a regional priority, so all the Northern Virginia localities have this in there to make sure that it remains fully funded. I know-
Well, we want to keep it fully funded. It's a great place to park one-time money.
Good, excellent. And as I say, I think the scoring criteria, is that a separate issue?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that may be important. On the PFAS, you know, try not to make it that we have to pay, local governments pay a fortune to try to get the water to some, you know, a safe drinking, and that the people who put all the PFAS there don't have to pay anything.
Exactly right.
So, it's stated more elegantly here, but that's the bottom line.
The problem is that-
Mr. Tonas.
Under, under current legislation, even the EPA is considering measures that will make it extremely expensive for us, almost-
Impossible.
Impossible to filter PFAS out of drinking water in a way that is, if, if we don't hold the, those who cause the problem accountable for that, in a sense that we, you know, reduce their incentive to use these chemicals, we are, we are, we are really up for a very, very problematic future here, because this is really very difficult to extract from and chemically filter out from, from critical water resources.
It's quite expensive to filter it out.
It is extremely expensive to do that right now with existing, with existing technology.
Absolutely.
And we definitely don't want the, the local taxpayers to, you know, to have to pay the bill for something that others can, are absolutely free and unhindered to, to contaminate. It's a, it's a basic principle. Those who, they have to stand for their products, and they have to reduce their, their propensity to use them. They have alternatives. This is not something that is not available. So it is. It's just cheaper and easier to do what they don't have to pay for.
Yeah. When the, when the businesses and corporations write the laws, it doesn't work out great for people, and that's part of the messaging we need to be working on, I think. We've got about five minutes to go, and I would be remiss to not at least say thank you, and I'll invite you all to see if there's something more you want to say. And that includes Senator Eben and Delegate McClure. Again, congratulations on the baby. But you all are really, I mean, I think we're very lucky in our delegation. I mean, as you say, like, we're all kind of simpatico. You represent, we represent this community, you represent this community. We're all kind of on the same page, which is really, really helpful. We don't have to get into arguments about things.
It is helpful. We share the same constituencies, and we recognize that, and we all work to improve the health and well-being of our constituencies.
Absolutely, which is our job.
And we appreciate the fact that your values are, in my view, line up where our delegation values line up. You know, we will try to really fight hard to maintain, you know, inclusiveness, equity, the protection of individual rights. I mean, this next General Assembly session, our top priorities will be passing legislation that will craft constitutional amendments in three areas, ensuring access to reproductive healthcare, including abortion care, you know, IVF treatment, all that. So that will be in a constitutional-
And restoration rights.
And then we've got, yeah, a proactive, it'd be proactive protection for LGBTQ in the equity marriage area. So you can marry whoever you want, regardless of race, gender, or sexual identity. And then the restoration of felon right, of voting rights for felons. We're one of only a few states where felons actually have to, once they've done their time and they re-enter society, they have to apply to get their voting rights back.
To the governor.
To the governor. We have to, we have to fix that.
All roads seem to lead to this, it's really-
So, no, but let's just be clear. The governor does not have a role in putting-
He's irrelevant to constitutional amendment process.
Thank you, Senator Eben.
Before the voters, yes. Adam, Adam really likes that word, which is interesting. But, so if these constitutional amendments pass each chamber in 2025, they then have to pass the chambers, each chamber again in 2026 without one period or comma changing. Now, that would require the Democrat majority to stay in the majority in the House of Delegates, because they have an election in 2025. So again, if we pass them in both chambers two consecutive years, maintain our control of the House of Delegates, then these constitutional amendments will go before the voters in November of 2026. We're putting most of our energy and, you know, wherewithal behind getting those things through. And there will be other issues. We will, we will have a budget again. It's the year that we amend the budget. We've already passed our biennial budget. That will be a very stressful period for us. I can just tell you now.
So, thank you. And I appreciate your, I mean, this has been a very nice, honest, frank conversation about kind of what you can and can't do, and where the problems are. And anything that we can do to help, which seems to me may be messaging, again, I really think we need to be a much better job. I mean, we talk, if people knew, like, the great stuff that kind of got passed through and then got, and the difference it could have made in their lives, but got, you know, vetoed, I think we might be better off. We just need to find ways to get that message out. I'm not an expert in that, but it seems like we could do a better job.
Apparently, we're not either.
We'd certainly be happy to help you.
But we're, we're, we're working on it. We're getting, we're getting better and better. It's, it's, it's a struggle. I mean, the governor does have a much bigger platform and a much bigger microphone, but, but we're getting the word out.
Yeah. Well, people are hurting around the, people are hurting around the Commonwealth.
More people are understanding what's going on. And, and again, I will just say that the, whatever you're going to hear at the national level, that those narratives are going to be repeated in the General Assembly, not by people who, you know, are part of the Arlington delegation, but we'll be pushing back on legislation to require localities to work with ICE. We'll, we'll be pushing back on legislation that, you know, will be anti-immigrant. We'll be pushing back on legislation that will transgender stuff in schools, I'm sure will come up again. So we're going to have our hands full just maintaining the progress that we have to date.
People, people need to understand that just like-
Yeah, go ahead, Delegate Lobes.
I, I hope that, that you understand that we're fighting for our values down in Richmond, and that we are fighting against efforts every day to roll back the progress we've made. And we have to stand at the state level against some of the stuff that we know is going to happen, not in a year, not in two years, but in three months.
Right. And we're at the local level doing the same thing.
Yeah.
So we will be your, your very strong brick wall.
We hope so. We hope so. And anything we can do to help support you, please let us know. Senator Eben, is there anything you wanted to add before we finish up, and I'll ask-
I think my colleagues have exhausted our time.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Delegate McClure?
I don't have anything more to add, other than what was said. So I just appreciate y'all taking the time and also allowing me to participate virtually.
Absolutely. We appreciate you. Thank you so very much. All right, with that, all?
Madam Chair, who is the legislative liaison on the board this year? Who's?
We haven't decided.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm out of that.
Does he want me to?
I think, I think the chair, the incoming chair likely will have a lot to do with it, I'm guessing, but we'll see.
I'm sure we would all like to know. I mean, Alana's always there to help us, but if there's a county board member that-
You should call.
We always will designate one or two county board members to, to do the job and be in constant contact with you, and they also come to Richmond when necessary.
Just to piggyback on that as well, I mean, we really do appreciate all of your support, the fact that you do come down and advocate for a lot of the things we fight for, that you're advocating for your messaging, and also the fact that we only have one or two staffers for each of our offices, and you have a huge contingent of experts across many different fields who have been very helpful in us, are helpful with our crafting legislation, with thinking about regulatory issues. And so I cannot thank you enough for, for that help.
I think we're really a good team, and it really is a symb-